Back from our closed session, if I can have the city attorney report out for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Councilman, you did join us before any briefings took place. The council was briefed as to items A, B, C, and E, but no reportable action was taken. Item D was put off to a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we are adjourned from our special meeting, and is ready to start the regular? Okay, so I will call to order our regular meeting of the City Council of Temple City, June 4th, 2019. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez.
Here.
Mayor Fish is absent.
We have a motion, please.
Motion to excuse Mayor Fish for cause.
Second.
Thank you. Mayor Fish is feeling under the weather a little bit, and if she's watching, I hope she feels better soon, so. Okay, we will start with our invocation, and then following invocation, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance by Boy Scout Troop 174. Who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts presenting the colors tonight are David Seacrest and Jordan Mendoza. Troop 174's next camping trip will be this weekend at San Bernardino Peak. Troop 174 meets every Thursday from 7:30 to 9 o'clock at Westminster Presbyterian Church near the corner of Temple City Boulevard and Live Oak. Boys interested in backpacking and backcountry camping are welcome. So, we will first, before our Pledge of Allegiance, everyone can please stand. We'll start with our invocation. "Lord heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. Our community calls us by electing us to office to give all of our knowledge in this meeting. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of strength and enthusiasm. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. Please protect the men and women of our armed services and bring them home safely. Watch over our local sheriff and fire personnel and keep them out of harm's way as they protect us. And please continue to watch over the citizens of our great community. We ask this in your name. Amen."
Amen.
Okay, which scouts?
All those wearing uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Scouts salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's awesome, that's cool function. Thank you, gentlemen. In all the rush, I forgot to put my coat on. I better do that, so. Feel like I'm well dressed. Okay. Okay, we'll now move on to item five ceremonial matters. There are none this evening. So we will then begin with item six, our public comments. City Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Procedure to address the City Council is highlighted on the first page of this agenda. I have one speaker request form from Steve Stafford. Mr. Stafford?
Mayor Protem Chavez, council members, city staff. I was at the special meeting Saturday for the park, and I liked a lot of the ideas. The one thing I think would be better is to put the parking closer to the existing parking there in the parking lot and put the park where the existing parking is now. Because it's going to look kind of funny to have a park in the middle of two parking lots. And I think we can get more space out of it that way, too. Might be a little space, but better than nothing. I like the idea where it is. I also want to make sure if they do restrooms, they put some lights around there. So when the deputies have to go in there for one reason or another, they have some lighting. I already know the address to the park. I saw it in a report for the development there where Alpha Beta used to be. And it's going to be important to do this right because of where it is. Kind of a little bit hidden away from, you know, the beaten path over there, so. I think, I really think having all the parking together is a better way to do it. And have the park, you know, where the parking is now. I like the idea of having the outreach, and I'm planning on being at the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. And just for the public, we will be continuing with those public hearings in the near future, so. They're on our website, I believe, and I'm sure we'll periodically announce those during our meetings, so. Thank you for all who attended on Saturday, and we hope you come out in the future. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Jen?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Jeanne from Temple City Library. I'm here to talk about our upcoming June programs. I'm very happy to announce the county library system was named the Library of the Year, so that's a very prestigious award for the county library system, so.
Wait, wait, our library here?
No, the whole county.
Oh, the county, okay.
But we're going to have a big celebration, so stay home for our big celebration. Some day will happen in June. We'll still figure out what we're going to do. Our summer discovery program, that's annually, every summer, we hold this when the kids out of school, starting on July 1st, and it lasts until August. So everybody is open for everybody, and you can sign up for the program, read books, and redeem prize, also have a chance to win gift car. I'm very proud to say, five years in a row, Temple City Library is the top one for the online summer reading program participates. So we want to keep this tradition, so I encourage everybody to come to the library.
So we're number one in the county?
Yeah, the whole county, eighty-eight libraries. And so I want to encourage everybody, either come to the library or visit our website and sign up for the summer discovery program. It's fun. And also, I'm excited to announce this year, we were choosing to be the free lunch site. So, starting next Monday until August 2nd, from Monday to Friday, from 12 to 1, we serve free lunch for the children eighteen and under. There's, everybody is welcome as long as you're eighteen and under, and there's low income required as well. So that's every Monday to Friday. And as you see, we are kinder for events, but I want to feature two programs. One is this coming Saturday from 2 to 3, we have a magic show, Magician Allen Oshiro. He performed at Magic Castle, so he will come here to do a magic show. And also on the last Saturday of June, which is June 29, we have a comedy walkie-juggler show. So it's also 2 to 3, so we have a lot of programs in the library. Check us out. You can call us at 626-285-2136. Or go to our website, www.lacountylibrary.org to find more, what we can offer. Thank you.
Okay, so before you leave, I just want to let you know that last Friday, I was at the high school, and we were talking to some of the students there, and the subject of the library came up. And first of all, they said what a great library we have and how thankful they are. And then when I told them that we were going to be redoing it, they even got more excited. And so, thank you. I want you to know that because your work does not go unnoticed. Students and the people in Temple City do use that library, obviously, and are very proud of it, and hopefully will be even more proud of it in the near future, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? If not, I will close public comments, and we will now move on to item seven on the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless further, unless removed for further discussion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, any objection? Okay, if no objection, the motion passes. Can we have a council roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Yu.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez.
Yes. Okay, we will now move to item eight, our public hearings. Item A, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 19-1034, amending Title IX zoning regulations, Chapter 1 of the Temple City Municipal Code pertaining to flag lot subdivisions in the R1 zone. Presentation today will be made by associate planner Lou. Welcome.
Thank you, City Council. Let's start with the background of the flag lot subdivision. Flag lot subdivision was first allowed in 1988, largely was in response to the complaint that the 1988 general plan had downzoned some large, some properties from a multifamily use to a single family use. So as a response, the city adopted a regulation for flag lot subdivisions allowing large parcels to be subdivided into two parcels. So that regulation since had been amended twice, in 1998 and the year of 2002, which resulted in today's development standard. On the screen, and you can see the diagram showing how it works. So in order to do a flag lot subdivision, you would have to have a parcel of eighty feet wide, 210 feet long, in order to create two parcels out of it, with each having a net land area of 7,200 square feet, as required minimum land area. The driveway of the back parcel has to be 20 feet wide, with 16 feet paving and two feet landscaping along the sides. The blue color-coded lot, new lot, is called the front lot. The one in the back, because of its shape, is called the flag lot. Currently, if you were to develop houses on a flag lot or the front lot for a flag lot subdivision, a two-story house would be allowed on the front lot, but a two-story house would be prohibited on the flag lot. So on February 5th, this city council had a discussion about the flag lot subdivision, and during the discussion, you had brought up some concerns and issues which are summarized on the screen. You talked about increased permeable paving, and talk about the security and eyes on the streets. You were concerned about the amount of front yard paving, the variety in building heights, and the perception of higher density because of the flag lot subdivision. Also, flag lot subdivision would have impact on the infrastructure and a sense of community versus isolation. You briefly touched on the original intent of the flag lot and the preservation of a property right. And housing, the flag lot would help the city to meet the regional housing goal as well. In order to address the city's council's concerns, staff had looked into different options and conducted analysis. Well, the analysis shows that no one solution would cover all the issues you had brought up because some issues listed in the previous slide conflict with others, each other. And depending on who's looking at those issues, some may value some issues over others. But the option of limiting the building height would help address most of the issues you had brought up. Therefore, staff prepared a zoning code amendment to propose to limit the building height on the front lot to one story and eighteen feet. The recommendation was presented to the planning commission on March 26. The planning commission disagreed with the staff recommendation. The planning commission noted some issues, that they thought, well, we only had a small number of new flag lot subdivision in the past ten years, and one-story house is likely the same size as a two-story, and is not subject to the floor area ratio limitation. And last one, they felt that there is a desire for consistency, not a variety of building height. Still, in order to address the issues brought up by this city council, staff maintains the same recommendation, that the zoning code be amended to limit the building height to one story and eighteen feet. Therefore, staff requests you to introduce this proposed ordinance for first reading, to amend the zoning code, and to schedule the second reading for of this month. And with this, the planning manager and I are ready to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any council questions? No? Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to be heard? Saying none, I will close the public hearing, and now is our time for council questions or comments. Would anybody like to have any comments or questions?
I do have one, just one thing, so I, I was trying to recall from notes from the last meeting when we discussed this. Is it true that the, so when we determined the floor area ratio calculation for flag lots, is the flagpole area of the driveway considered as part of the calculation or as excluded?
Yeah, the flag portion of the flag lot does not count towards the land area used for calculating the log coverage or floor area ratio.
Okay, but the driveway for the interior lot, if it was a separate driveway, that would be part of the floor area ratio?
Okay.
Yes.
I thought historically, perhaps, I think one time the flag lot, we did calculate the flagpole, didn't we? Did we not? I thought one time we did, but we, later we said we won't calculate that because that's not fair.
Right, we, just earlier this year, or later last year, we had amended zoning code to make it clear that the driveway of flagpole of the flag lot won't be counted towards the total land area for the calculation of the floor area ratio.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
No question. May I just make a comment, Mr. Mayor Protem?
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I think the floor area ratio part, when we decided, I mean, just to answer some of the planning commission's concern. Number one, if the small male flag lot subdivision doesn't mean that we should not limit it. Yes, we are, there are still many lots actually in the city that's still available, but, so I think we should do something about it while we can. And the one-story houses are often the same size, that's referring to a regular-sized lot, but when you have 700s. Basically, the zoning code says if it's a one-story building, you are allowed up to 50 percent FER. If a two-story building, then you only limit 35 percent. The planning commission did that ruling, and the city council accepted it way back when, was that we figured the impact on the environment for a one-story home is actually much less than a two-story, you have less visual impact. So the fact that we're limiting it to one story, I don't think would create any issue at all. I mean, that's just in conformance of why we did it to begin with. It has nothing to do with one story. We allow one story to be larger because it, it's really a way to award folks doing the single-story homes because we want more single-story home in the city. And then lastly, they said a desire for consistency, no variety. I do think that variety is important. If you walk, if we drive down a street, we have nothing but a two-story home, it feels like you're driving in high walls, so it's good to have some visual relief, so. And I think we also have, you know, discussed this in abundance, first time when we brought this issue up. So in my opinion, we should approve staff's recommendation and approve the matter in front of us.
Okay, thank you, and I agree, and I'm glad you addressed the issues brought up by the planning commission. I know they gave it a good amount of thought and deliberation, and I think your response is a good response to those concerns. The only other concern that I know that was brought up, and that was one that I had, was the security issues as well. And the fact that with these flag lots, it seems with those two-story homes that are going in front, you can't even see the back house, and it's just completely blocked off. And I know that can present some concerns, especially with the burglaries and stuff that we are constantly fighting against in the city, so. Okay, so, can I have a motion? I guess we're ready for one. Councilmember Yu, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, sort and lay.
I can do it, but I can't see.
Okay, if you can't make it, you can't see.
Nope, I can see it, so.
Um, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to move that we introduce for the first reading by title only and wait for the reading of the ordinance number 19-1034, amending Title IX, Chapter 1 of the Temple City Municipal Code pertaining to flag lot subdivision, R1 code. And schedules the second reading of ordinance 19-1034 for June 18th.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Hearing none, can I have a council roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please?
Yes, Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Yu.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez.
Yes, and if I could have our clerk read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 19-1034, an ordinance of City Council of the City of Temple City, California, amending Title IX, Chapter 1 of the Temple City Municipal Code.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we will now move on to item nine, unfinished business. There is none. Item 10, new business. Item A, we're going to, item A, approval of agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for animal control shelter and licensing services. San Gabriel Valley Humane Society has provided notice of its intent not to extend the existing agreement with the city for animal control, shelter, and licensing services. They are now seeking a new contract with increased fees to cover the increased cost of providing the services. And we will now hear from our community development director, Forbes. Thank you.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. What's before you this evening is a new one-year agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, which provides the city's animal control, sheltering, and licensing services. As the council may remember, you approved an agreement with them in 2016 that had an initial three-year term that expires at the end of this month. There were options for annual extensions, and the Humane Society has indicated that they do not wish to exercise those options and would like to do a new agreement with the city. The reason being that the annual extensions had an automatic cost escalator of 4% built in, which has happened the last two years of the contract. But due to increases in the minimum wage and other increases in their cost of providing services, the 4% escalator is no longer adequate to cover their cost of providing services. So they are requesting a new agreement with a new cost of $21,000 per month, which we have accounted for in the proposed budget that will be coming to you very soon. They have requested, rather than doing a multi-year agreement as we did before, they're requesting that we revisit this annually because of their uncertainties. Due to the minimum wage and uncertainties in their cost of providing services, they would like to sit down with us annually to renegotiate a contract price. So what's before you this evening is just an annual agreement for fiscal year 1920, and then we will be back before you again next spring to discuss it again for future years. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Cindy Rigney from the Humane Society in the audience this evening, who can answer any questions for you.
Didn't bring an animal with you tonight, huh?
I did, I did.
Oh, well, okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any council questions?
I do, Mayor Protem.
Okay, go ahead.
Just off the top of your head, do we recall, I guess in recent history, other cities besides us, and I know San Gabriel, that had worked with the Humane Society in the past? Was Rosemead one of those cities, or?
Yes, the City of Rosemead recently worked with them for, they did not have a full service package as we do. It was more limited package, primarily sheltering and after-hours, animal control. And I believe I'll let Cindy answer in more detail, but they have been in discussions with potentially partnering with other cities as well.
I guess what I'm getting at is, is it more helpful for them to have more cities have contracts with them that reduces everyone's overall cost? Is that correct to say?
I think generally, yes, but they, there's also, they have capacity issues. They can only handle so much, especially with the facilities and vehicles and staffing that they have now. They don't want to bite off more than they can chew, so to speak. So I think for them, it's a balance between what their resources are and what they can provide versus getting more client cities to bring in more funding.
Okay, Mr. Rigney, would you mind coming up and maybe addressing councilmembers' main questions? Because it was a similar question that I had, and that is, I know in the past, and this goes back many years, where I believe you had four or five cities at one time, I believe, didn't you?
Yes, when we were under the Joint Power Authority, we serviced Monrovia, Azusa, Monterey Park. Before that, many more cities, too. The JPA at one point, I believe, had like 21 cities in it. That was when this was a much more agricultural area, the number of animals was not as high. Recently, and part of this is again due to our facility, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we're having our 95th anniversary, we plan on a big celebration. What we want to do in the next five years is rebuild the shelter so that we can take on more capacity, but right now we are limited with the number of kennels that we have. We did, and I can share it, it's now official, I just signed the contract, we have taken on service for the City of Duarte.
Is that full service, or?
Yes, limited animal control. They have their own animal control providers up there that they employ directly. They have a small number of animals. It would take, it does not take us to capacity. The other cities that have approached us would take us beyond our capacity by over 1,000 animals a year. So while we are always entertaining and looking at other cities, you're absolutely correct, we would love to expand. That is, our whole purpose is to take on as many animals as we can. We need to rebuild the shelter before we can expand beyond what we have now.
What leads to your capacity limit? Is that the amount of land you have?
Number of kennels. We have land. We've got land. We've got great land over there.
So you have room to expand at your location?
Yes.
But to build and maintain the kennels is the issue?
Yes, it's financial.
Okay.
We're estimating about one and a half to two million, minimum.
And a quick follow-up to Councilmember Mann, is it, so what would be your capacity? Do you estimate, what could you take on, let's say, if you were able to expand the kennels? I mean, what could you?
That would depend, right now, our capacity is about 22, 2,300 animals per year. With additional kennels, and again, it's all dependent on how they are configured, and we need to get surveyors and architects and blueprints in to look at all of this stuff for us. But we could probably go up to maybe 3,000, maybe even 3,500, just depending on how it's all configured.
Thank you. Anything else?
There was one more, I just forgot it.
All right, anyone else?
I'll come back later.
Any other question? Any other questions? Okay, well, we're figuring out that, uh, I'll go ahead. No, thank you very much. I'll open up, uh, our public comments. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this matter? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And so I will open it up once again to any council questions or comments on this matter.
I just, I just remembered my question. So, um, I, and and thank you for explaining uh that in detail. Uh, my my question is a little related to that. Um, I I know in the staff report, uh, it says the cost increase is primarily due to the increases in minimum wage. Um, is, because you you refer to potential capital improvements that might not just improve the existing facility, but also expand. Um, would the cost increase also account, does does it take into account that those will be part of that? Or is that sort of like a separate item that's completely?
No, our our fees currently are just based on maintaining the shelter that we have, which is a lot of maintenance costs just to paint the decking and refurbish so that the animals don't fall through and the public doesn't fall through. Um, and the cost of minimum wage is, we did, we had always been under the small employer minimum wage, but we did this year as a board decide we had to go to the regular state minimum wage, simply because we're not competitive. We cannot hire staff because we don't provide any benefits for these staff either. So we have a very, very difficult time hiring staff, um, with minimum wage and no benefits.
Would it be accurate to say that once you've m- meet the minimum wage, that the cost increases in the future won't be as substantial as compared to this this giant step increase?
Again, I think we need, that's why we're not comfortable entering into a multi-year contract with a built-in escalator clause, simply because as the costs go up across all lines of of businesses, and food costs go up, sanitation costs go up, uh, we have increased charges to our property tax bill for sewage, things go up. Um, I'm just not comfortable making the statement that I I hope we never go to this extent again. Absolutely. I don't like it any more than you do, but I can't guarantee that they're always going to be a two percent, three percent, five percent because costs do go up. And at some point, I would anticipate, and I want to open the discussion with all of our constituent cities about how we're going to finance rebuilding the shelter. That is going to be, um, it it's not considered in this cost, but I would like to open discussions as to how we, as a community, can get started on this project because it's going to benefit everybody. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
You know, and and I appreciate those comments, but I know that, um, I know that in the report, I know as part of your, uh, source of income, one would be donations, grants, requests.
Mm-hmm.
I always felt this, got a sense that, uh, even though we've been with San Gabriel Humane Society for a long time, I don't know that Temple City really feels like they're part of that, because you guys are not in the city, obviously. And I'm wondering if maybe if we brainstorm a little bit more, maybe in the future, to see about maybe publicizing it more, maybe have some type of drives. I know a lot of the offs, a lot of costs can probably be offset by people, I'm assuming you take donations of pet food and things like that?
Absolutely, absolutely. No, we love it.
So I I'm thinking that, you know, people can be charitable at times when you have an event, uh, maybe, uh, set up a booth maybe during our summer concerts to accept donations, something of that sort, to to offset some of those costs. Because and in that in that sense, I think that then our community will feel be feel more involved as part of that.
Right, right.
Um, because, you know, it's the name, San Gabriel Humane Society.
San Gabriel Valley.
I know, San Gabriel Valley, it's a San Gabriel.
I always emphasize that.
I stand corrected. But, uh, uh, also, I noticed in the report that there, one of the reasons, uh, I think that, uh, was given for, uh, what is it, uh, additional services and stuff, that, uh, regarding the vaccination, microchipping clinic and stuff, that, um, there was a decrease in attendance at the annual July clinic. Uh, I I I said this before, and I'll say it again. I I really miss having that clinic in the city. I I think it was not only a a a well-attended, but it was part of the community and part of that, that being part of that, uh, Humane Society. I would, I would like to work on perhaps one of those these days, bringing it back in some form. Um, I know that we can get volunteers for that. I know some of our youth organizations worked at it and and, um, I know it was a lot of work for staff, but maybe we could supplement that with other forms of, uh, of volunteers and, uh, and get that stuff done. Because, uh, again, you know, it's, I know it's not that far, but I, one of the complaints I've always seen to hear hear from people is, oh, I don't feel like going over there, you know?
Yes.
People can tend to be a little bit lazy.
Yeah.
Myself included, you know, and but but, you know, I I know that you have extended and you have, uh, um, offered more times and make it, try to make it more convenient.
Right. We have done that, and what we have seen, I mean, honestly, the attendance at those for two years now has been very disappointing.
Yeah.
We are combining it, uh, this year. We will do it again in July at the shelter. Uh, but I I do believe that most of your residents are just coming and taking advantage of no lines. They can do the license.
Reason for it's why it's in July? Is that just because that's where most of the?
Licensing season, correct, correct.
Because I remember it always pretty hot at that time also.
Yes, yeah. I would love to find another event that we could do here. Um, I believe we've had some discussions of dog walks and things like that.
Well, we should look into that.
Absolutely.
Staff look into that.
Absolutely.
One last question I had, um, I I haven't heard too many complaints regarding the service, or where do those go? Or do those go just to you, or do they come to the city, or how does that handle as far as anything with the service? Do we, do we get any complaints?
Uh, we get occasional complaints from residents about they, you know, they had to wait too long, or they they didn't understand the process, or those kinds of things. And our our staff deals with those. Um, and we we communicate regularly. Cindy and I talk regularly, and my staff and her staff talk regularly. So they're usually, any issues that come to our attention are usually pretty minor, and we can work them out just by by talking to each other.
Couple of questions. I'm not quite sure I understand what the role of the city is administratively and the role of the Humane Society. Um, recently, I've had a, a couple of days ago, actually, my dog was neutered. And so I've recently had some interactions, a lot more than I wish to admit to, with the Humane Society, with licensing issues and, um, other things. But I'm not quite sure, like, when a citation is given, it's sent from the city, and this, the resident needs to comply both at the shelter's end and the city. But there seems to be some delay in the upgrading of information. So even though everything was completed, it seemed the city did not have that information. So I'm wondering, what what is that process? Like, does the shelter send this information to the city?
Yes.
Okay, so it could just be a delay administratively in the process.
It could be a timing issue, yes.
And I think there is some frustration there. I mean, there was for me in the sense that I've done everything I needed to comply, but the city didn't have that information yet, so.
But you know, I think there's a, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, direct forward, isn't there a third-party administrator also for those fines and those delays? Not just the city, but that's outsourced to another third-party as well? Not the Humane Society, but even another third-party?
Correct. We have, the citation processing, um, or data ticket, uh, does the the processing and collections for us. Um, but the, as far as the the citations go, the the Humane Society is the one who issues the citations on behalf of the city. Um, they are then forwarded to us for processing, but we don't, the 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 Humane Society and their officers are the ones who are on top of the cases and when compliance is happening and when it's time for a citation to be issued. We don't actually issue the citation, um, based on assumptions about where a case is. They, their officers issue the citation and then give it to us to process it and collect and all of that with data ticket. Um, so they're, they are primarily responsible for administering the licensing process and doing the related enforcement for people who who are not complying with the licensing requirements.
And and I I will say for for the public out there that I did bring it to the attention of our city manager and, um, Mr. Forbes, is that the citation itself is, in its current state, and I know we've done something to, or we're doing something to make that process a little bit better, is at the least very difficult to read. So when you get a citation, the resident is left a copy, which is like the third copy of a carbon copy. And so it's very difficult to sometimes read the dates. You can, and especially try and decipher a certain person's writing if they are in a hurry and they scribble it, sort of like a a doctor's note.
Right.
Would be a prescription. And then when, when I turned over the citation, um, on the backside, there's a different, there was a different timeframe, I believe. Uh, Michael, you can explain it. I forget exactly. But one says you have, you know, thirty days and the and the other date was twenty days, so right on that, it's either the twentieth or thirtieth date. I think on the twentieth, it goes in and it doubles your your fee, which was frustrating also. So, you know, I I did bring it to the attention that we need to make those citations as legible as possible for the people that are getting them. And Michael, maybe you can explain what what we're doing now about about that.
Yes, we we have talked about it, and we've made some changes to our our procedures and to to the Humane Society's procedures to try and address that. The part of the confusion, and this this isn't unique to animal control. We run into this with other administrative citations, is that the the deadline for compliance is not necessarily the same as the deadline to pay the citation.
Right, that's right.
Um, and so there, we we have run into to a number of cases where people are confused by that and don't understand the two deadlines. So we have made some changes to how we're issuing the citations and how the deadlines are being communicated to try and clarify that and to to help people understand that paying the citation does not mean you still don't have to go get the license, and getting the license does not absolve you from paying the citation. It's two, two different things, both of which have to be done. So we have taken steps in our process and their process to try and address that and and hopefully we'll be able to make that clear for people going forward.
And I think one of the problems was that on the front side, where it tells you the the date to comply, when you turn it over, on the backside, there is, it's a pink slip and the writing is in blue, extremely tiny. And it's probably like eight paragraphs, and it's on the sixth paragraph that you actually can find a date, and it's a different date from
From the front.
the one on the front. So needless to say.
We can address the cita- I mean, we're using citations that that we've been provided by the city, so we can certainly.
Yeah, we've, the the citations that we use, or that we provide to them to issue are the same citations we use for our administrative citations. And it's, I know it's been a number of years since that, the the language on that has been reviewed, so it's, and unfortunately, you know, we order them thousands at a time, so, um, it is time for us to revisit that and look at that. Um, one change that we've made, starting right now, is that the the deadline on the front, rather than writing a date on the front, they're just writing that compliance is imme- must be done immediately. So then, at least, people are only having to deal with one date, and it just says immediate instead of putting a specific date so that they know that it's just at their earliest convenience, they need to take care of it. Another change that we've also made is, um, you mentioned before the delay in getting them mailed out. Um, so another change we've made is that the, uh, animal control officers, it's a now two-step process. They're both posting the citation on the door, um, and we are mailing a copy out. So it's a two, one way or another, people will will get it, and we're hoping that by posting it on the door, that'll take care of the few days delay of it going out in the mail.
And I didn't realize that I could pay the fee at City Hall.
Yes, we do not collect citation fees at all.
I thought I had to to mail it in, but I I don't think there was anything on there that said you could pay at City Hall. I just assumed I had, would have had to mail it in, which would have put me past the day and doubled the the fee. But I want everybody to know that that we did send a check to where you get it, to the Humane Society for the licensing, but evidently, they never received it. But it was in my husband's registry as made the check, because I made sure that he did it on the day the notice came. And so, you know, um, I was trying to be a good citizen of Temple City with my dogs, but unfortunately, things happen.
The postal service interfered.
Some somehow, or it just, it got lost. Those things do happen. But, um, so going through the process actually made me more aware. And and I'm glad I did because I got to see it firsthand and then talked to Brian and Michael about how can we improve this? Because we don't want to make this process so frustrating that people just say, throw their hands up and say, I'm just not gonna do this at all, so.
And that's why we will make the changes and and working with Mr. Forbes and the city. That is exactly what we want to do.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You know, to to address that issue right about mailing, I think the simple fix of that, just maybe change the language, it must be postmark five. That way, you don't have to worry about when your check, when your check is dated or whatever, as long as you get it mailed by that date. I see a lot of, uh, a lot of agreements and stuff use that now as a, as a language, postmark five, so. Anyway, so yeah, that, I think that's a good idea. I think, uh, it probably is time to take a look at those things and, um, hopefully, we'll have a long, continuous relationship with San Gabriel Valley.
Absolutely. We hope so.
And, um, those are the kind of things, though, that need to be, uh, tweaked a little bit.
And and I just want to say that the process of having the dog neutered, uh, was great at the Humane Society, less than half the cost of what the animal hospital was, wanted to charge, and my dog is doing, he's not happy, but he has a cone.
He still has the cone, right?
He has a cone of shame for two weeks, but, um, they were great with him, and so I can't thank you enough for taking care of him.
Okay, do we have any other comments or questions? Right, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve a new agreement between the city of Temple City and the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for animal control, shelter, and licensing services for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
A second?
Okay, thank you. Any objection? Hearing none, uh, motion will carry. Can we have a council roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chavez?
Yes. All right, well, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing our next guest, uh, in future meetings, so. Okay, we will now move on to item B, that it will be our first reading and introduction of ordinance number nineteen dash ten thirty-five, amending titles four and five of the Temple City Municipal Code relating to sidewalk and mobile food vending. City Council has requested to approve an amendment to the City Council Municipal Code, Title Four and Five, to make Temple City Sidewalk Vending Program compliant with Senate Bill nine forty-six. Nine forty-six imposes restrictions on how local agencies may regulate sidewalk vending. And we will have our presentation tonight by Public Works Management Analyst Avery. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Oh, sorry. Good evening, City Council. Um, so as you just said, the
Did I take your thunder from you?
Uh, yes, you did, sorry.
You can repeat it. You probably will make it sound more, uh, uh, efficient than I can.
So the ordinance number nineteen ten thirty-five is for amending the titles, uh, four and five of the Temple City Municipal Code relating to sidewalk vending and mobile food vending. So, uh, for some background, September, on September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, the state of California approved the SB nine forty-six, which is the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, and it opposes limits on how local agencies may regulate sidewalk vending. And on January first of this year, SB nine forty-six became effective throughout the entire state. And Temple City Municipal Code currently places restrictions on sidewalk vending that have to be amended to comply with SB nine forty-six.
You know, before you get any too further, I just have a quick question. Do you have, do you have any sense as to the rationale behind this legislation? What was, what was the intent, uh?
So I believe that the, from what I've read, that the intent was to help, uh, the law and author, local authorities to treat sidewalk vendors as contributors to the local, local economies and less as being unlawful or as nuisances.
Hmm.
Um, so that's my my interpretation of why it was brought up. So that's my, my interpretation of why it was brought up.
Sacramento overreaching and seizing local control. I think legislation like this belong to big cities perhaps, but really, I mean, they should leave that to local city council.
Yeah, it seems like this is, uh, this type of ordinance would maybe best be suited for the city of Los Angeles.
Or San Francisco downtown or something like that, but you know.
But they've, they've applied it across the board at some time.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately.
Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
So SB nine forty-six, uh, or, and yes, now the California Government Code, uh, section five one zero three seven states that a local authority shall not regulate sidewalk vending, except in accordance with later sections, five one zero three eight and five one zero three nine. And, um, so local authorities can adopt their own program to regulate sidewalk vendors, but the regulations have to comply with those standards. So restrictions on sidewalk vending can only be directly related to public health, safety or welfare. And violations are only punishable through a civil fine. And as I mentioned earlier, the reason that they wanted, that SB nine forty-six was brought up was because of, to ensure that the law treats sidewalk vendors as viable contributors to local economies. So the proposed, uh, ordinance would, to, to make our program compliant with SB nine forty-six, the requirements from the proposed ordinance would be, mobile vendors are allowed in all areas of the city, except as specified, and stationary vendors are allowed in non-residential areas, but are not allowed in residential neighborhoods. Vendors may be required to comply with the same limitations on hours of operation as nearby businesses. And vendors must provide a trash receptacle and must be located within two hundred feet of a restroom that is available for use by customers. Vendors may not use signs that are attached to their cart. Uh, vendors may not use amplified sound. Vendors may, must be located ten feet from crosswalks, driveways, bus stops and similar features and that may pose a safety hazard. Vendors must be located at least three hundred feet from public and private schools and from special events. And vending carts may not be attached to any object in the public right of way and may not impede pedestrian flow and may not be left unattended.
Let me ask, are these, um, are these restrictions taken from the ordinance itself? Are we, are we coming up with this language?
That is the, it's working with the city attorney based on what our current code is and.
Cause I find some of these, I find some of these terms a little vague. Uh, for example, vendors must be located a minimum distance. What does that mean, a minimum distance?
In which sections, sir?
Um, one of the bullets that we just went over, um, regarding, uh, the proposed ordinance will require the following. Uh, one of those, it says vendors must be located a minimum distance from crosswalks, driveways, bus stops and similar features that may pose a safety hazard. What, what is the definition of minimum distance? Is that ten feet, fifteen feet? It's gotta be something in the close.
My slide says ten feet, so.
No, no problem.
Yours says ten feet?
Yeah.
Why does it say ten feet? Oh, is it down here?
Yeah.
Well, is that, no, that's for the food trucks.
And sir, if you look in section four dash twelve dash six on page five, uh, of the ordinance itself, no sidewalk vendor may place or leave a vending cart within five feet of a marked crosswalk, within five feet of a curb.
So it's somewhere, you make me look somewhere else rather than just look in one place.
Yes, sir.
So we could have put like five feet in there, probably have made everybody happy.
We, we.
Maybe next time we should think about doing that.
Yes, sir.
That way you don't have to look for different places, but, uh, okay. So, so minimum distance is five feet?
It's five feet of crosswalk. Five feet of the curb return of a crosswalk, uh, with anywhere within a marked bus zone, within ten feet of a bus, of a bus bench or shelter used for public transit, uh, within eighteen inches from the edge of the curb. I keep them back from the curb, normally five feet away from things, but ten feet of, uh, away from bus, uh, areas because we know that people will congregate at those areas and you don't want the cart right in the middle of them.
Right, I agree. I just, it's just, so I guess, I guess what, my, my problem is in reading this report, is I usually go through the staff report before I look at the ordinance. Could maybe, rather than paraphrase what the ordinance says in the staff report, actually say what the ordinance says. You know, vendors must be located five feet from, uh, crosswalk rather than just say a minimum distance.
Will do.
Uh, just for future reference, I think it might be easier to follow.
Greg, how, how do they justify with like this bill where, you know, vendors can be out on the street? They can sell like the corn on the cob, say, or what have you. And yet there's very little restriction on that, but you have a camellia festival and the booths have to be covered three sides with netting in the front and it, it just makes no sense.
It's, a- as, as Ms. Avery said, um, the, the bill was proposed, uh, by, um, a gentleman who's now our insurance commissioner, who represented the thirty-third district and it's, um, much of south, southeast LA County, parts of Long Beach, Bell, Bell Gardens, Cudahay, areas where street vending was going on anyway. And this bill was intended in part to allow those, um, people to legitimize their businesses by creating a process for the county to work with their food carts, review their food carts and issue them permits to use their food carts on the street. And then by then limiting cities, uh, jur- cities' ability to not allow them, once they pass the county health test, to limit our ability to restrict them from our streets. Um, there are certain things we can do, which Ms. Avery will get into, but the purpose of this, uh, was very much to legitimize businesses that were already out there, not necessarily to extend them into cities like Temple City where we, we really don't see too much of it yet.
But even though the, the new laws and the regulations that we were proposing here, I think to address your question, there still are some built-ins regarding the cleanliness of it and stuff. You still have to comply with other regulations.
Who comes out? The health department?
That's a good question. Who's gonna enforce it?
Who's gonna enforce that?
We do initially.
It will have to be the city, yes. So, uh, Ms. Avery will, will, I, I'm sure get to, uh, the process for getting the permits. And so we'll understand that tonight and then, um, I'm happy to answer any questions after she, she walks us through that.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, while preparing the standards for street vending, uh, we also reviewed the, our out-of-date mobile food vending, which were like food trucks and the like, um, due to the similar nature of the business. So, uh, the ordinance includes updates to the code for mobile food vending as well. And the proposed requirements for mobile food vendors are that vendors may not operate facing the street. Vendors must be located at least twenty-five feet away from an intersection and ten feet away from bus stops and driveways. Vendors may not use lighted or flashing signs or amplified sound. And vendors may not stay at the same location for longer than one hour. Vendors must be located at least three hundred feet away from schools. Vendors must provide a trash receptacle and must be located within two hundred feet of a restroom that is available for use by customers. And vendors may not be located on private property unless explicitly permitted by the zoning code or in conjunction with a special event permitted by the city.
I have a quick question about the restroom requirement. So for at least the one vendor we know that operates in our city, I guess personally I've only seen them in two spots so far. One's in front of Ralph's and the other is near the Shell gas station on Broadway and Rosemead. So how do they meet that requirement? Do they have to have an arrangement with Ralph's or the gas station to allow that to happen?
I think under the way it's written, I think the answer to that is probably yes. Because you'll notice that most of those businesses will usually state restrooms by customers only.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and they're not, if they're not a customer, then they're never have a right to use the restroom.
So that two hundred foot requirement is not something we require now? In our current ordinance is something that this new ordinance will require? Is that correct?
Current ordinance does not allow street vending.
Current ordinance does not allow street vending, period?
No.
Then how do we have the food truck? Or am I mixing the mobile vendors and the street?
I think you're mixing, there's two different.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes, there's, there's two, two different categories. One is the food is sidewalk vending and then what, what Ashley's talking about right now is food trucks. The requirement is, we're proposing would be the same for both, that they have to be within two hundred feet of a restroom. That is not currently in our code. Um, in our current code, we allow food trucks, um, but we don't have the restroom or trash receptacle limitation. So this would be, uh, a new requirement. And, and to, to answer your question, yes, for example, if they were parked in front of Ralph's, the way that the ordinance is written, they could use the Ralph's restroom, but they would have to have a written agreement with Ralph's to allow their customers to use their restroom. That's the way that the, that the ordinance is written.
Yeah, but, but I guess on the same note, they can also technically park right outside Live Oak Community Center when it's open and that's a public restroom? Like how would that impact us? Do they need an agreement with the city to use? Oh, and that's residential too.
Part of it is residential around the park.
Yeah, yeah. So that wouldn't be allowed?
I would think not.
Yeah, as far as the use of the public restroom, I'm, I'm honestly not sure. I would defer to the city attorney on that because it's, it is, it's on city property. It's not in the public right of way, but it's.
So that, that would be sort of, my two concerns is what if there was a food truck parked in front of City Hall? And what if there was a food truck parked in front of Live Oak Community Center? How does that impact us?
And, and as, as we see it, the ordinance is written that they would be within two hundred feet of the restroom. They would be, the food truck would be allowed to be there for the operational time limit and then would have to move on. Um, so yes, that, that is.
So unlike a private entity, because our restrooms are open to the public, it fits into that definition?
It doesn't fit into the ordinance, yes.
Currently, do food trucks need, uh, city license to operate within the city? Cause this ordinance does require vendors would get a city business license.
Yes, they, currently they are required to have a city business license. The food truck that we had here recently did have a business license from us and they were operating legally.
I'm wondering if, uh, cause you're, this issue that we're discussing now is addressed at four dash thirteen dash seven. Um, it clearly says that a mobile food vendor shall have demonstrate that there's sufficient access to a nearby restroom facilities. And it addresses that clearly states that if it's a, um, if it's a privately owned facility, then the mobile food vendor has to get written permission from the owner. It really doesn't address the issue I think that council members have brought up. And that is, let, let's say it's parked next to a public facility. Uh, do they need the permission of the city? Uh, I, I'm, I'm assuming that since it's a public restroom, that they would not need that, uh, permission. Uh, but it's not really clear in here whether they do or not.
That's correct. The public restrooms are open to anyone, so.
So it's just assumed that, that that will, they, by doing that, they will have complied with this law?
Correct.
The way it's written?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, and we or staff doesn't have a problem with that?
That would be the same for gas stations.
No, gas stations are privately owned. Those aren't public restroom facilities.
But they, they would have to have an agreement with the gas station?
Yeah, yeah, written agreement. Any, any private facility, they need to have a written agreement as under this proposed ordinance.
How about the school district?
Well, that, that raises another issue. The school district, I think, would probably not be a, well, I don't know. Well, how is that, how would that be, uh, deemed? Was that public, the restrooms at a school are not a public restroom, I don't think, uh?
Not, not a public restroom, no. So, we can't stop the customers from using a public restroom. So we can't require an agreement or anything. Um, they have the right to, to use the restroom. Uh, with respect to private restrooms, we don't want a proliferation of street, street, uh, food trucks. So we do require that agreement so that we have some control over, uh, knowing that there's a restroom available if, if, uh, people eating at the truck need to use that facility.
Well, and I, I'm assuming none of this is written in stone. If we see an issue or problem that arises as a result, we can always amend that at some point as well. I, it don't seem to, at, at this time, it doesn't seem like we have an overabundance of those things. And, um, I haven't seen a lot of food trucks parked near the parks or schools and in a big rush to use the restrooms there and be having a problem. But I, I suppose it could be at some point, uh, but, you know. All right, any other questions? Are you, I'm sorry.
There's, there's a few more, there's a few more things Ms. Avery needs to go through.
Go ahead. We keep interrupting.
Uh, so the proposed amendments to the Temple City Municipal Code would be to adopt the new chapter four dash twelve on sidewalk vending and the new chapter four dash thirteen on mobile food vending. Amend section five one C zero, the definitions to revise the definition of peddlers and solicitors to specifically exclude street vendors and food trucks. And then to delete the, in their entirety, sections on solicitation from public streets, um, being prohibited, vendors permits, merchandising in parks, vendors restrictions, vendors vehicles and sales on streets.
And Mr. Mayor Protem and council members, we, we do want to make one change that I want to read into the ordinance right now during the first reading. Uh, on the top of page six of the ordinance, section four dash twelve dash seven B, uh, first of all, that section is very important because it allows for additional requirements consistent with state law, um, put on, uh, food, uh, food carts, not trucks, but carts within city-owned and operated parks. Uh, what we want to do is change that to say that the city manager or designee may issue additional requirements consistent with the government code, rather than the city may by resolution adopt them. Uh, the reason we want to make that change, parks are, uh, a part of this food vending issue that we want to maintain the most flexibility. Uh, one of the things that we've seen in other cities, uh, parks may have at some times of the year a limitation on the number of vendors that are permitted to actually work in the park. Um, one of the things that the state law explicitly allows is no stationary food vendors. That is, the carts can be in motion, stopped to sell and then must keep going. But nobody can put out a stationary food vending, uh, cart or food vending facility when the park has a concessionaire agreement. So for example, when AYSO or Little League is active in a park and they're running the snack stand, uh, then the city can prohibit there from being the same number of food carts that might otherwise be allowed in the park. We want to have some flexibility for that, so we want the city manager to be able to issue those regulations rather than have them have to come through the process of coming to council each time.
Okay, you raise a good point because we have a, uh, tournament kind of coming up in Little League right now. And I'm always at the park and invariably we have street carts pushed into the park and selling their ice cream, things like that. So explain to me then how this is going to affect that?
So what, what we will be able to do, once the ordinance is in place, is have the city manager work with the parks and recreation department to issue a set of regulations for our parks and state that, for example, uh, the number of permits to vend in Live Oak Park will be limited to say four or five or three total, uh, vendors that can work in that park. Further limitation again would be that those, those carts must be mobile, must not be parked in one place with the table folded out for a larger vending operation during any time at which there's a concessionaire agreement in effect, which would be your playoff time for, for Little League. Um, really the whole Little League season. But that way we're protecting, in this case, the nonprofits that have for a long time signed up to run, um, the concession in the park.
So we can't prohibit them? We can just place certain restrictions on them?
Put restrictions.
So, and, and you know, usually it's one, one cart, maybe two at the most that I ever see there.
And, and.
And they're, they are the ones that are on wheels. They just push them around and they move.
Correct.
Of course they stop when they make the sale, but that's okay.
That's okay. An example I'll give you, in the city of Pasadena, in Brookside Park, uh, the large grass field in front of the Rose Bowl has a designated number of carts that are allowed to work there. You move farther south into Brookside Park, there's another area with another designated number of carts farther south. Still to the Aquatic Center, there are three carts allowed there. So with a park that big, they've even carved it up area by area. And that's the kind of thing we can do, but as I said, we want to switch that from the city doing it by resolution to the city manager issuing those, so that especially as we start this process, we can be flexible and meet the needs of the community.
Now vending cart applies to not just food items, but also other items as well. Okay.
Now just, uh, can, may I make a quick comment related to what Mr. Murphy brought up? Um, in, in those cases, while I, I, I see the, the advantage of having that flexibility, I think if and when that happens, if Mr. Cook, you could at least make us aware that there is a change made so that if we get approached by members from the public. that there is a change made so that if we get approached by members from the public.
Absolutely.
That we're not kind of not, not understanding, oh, well, what just happened? What changed and we're not aware?
I, I actually talked with the director Burrows this, this afternoon about that. And she would be bringing that forward to the, um, Parks and Recreation Commission. We would bring that as kind of like a informational item to you so that you're aware.
Okay, thank you.
And, and where will they come and get this permit? At City Hall? And do we know how much it's gonna cost?
As far as the, the regulation goes from the business license perspective, it would just be a normal business license like everyone else gets. And the, I don't know off the top of my head what the cost is, but it's relatively minimal. Whether or not there would be a, a different or additional permit or approval required to operate in a park, that could be determined as part of the, the rulemaking process that, that Mr. Murphy described. But as far as what's currently on the books, it would just be a standard business license.
So my understanding from the regulations is they not only need a, a local, um, permit, but they also need something from the state as well?
They need a health department permit from the county health department.
And that would be part of the application process when they apply here?
Yes, as part of our process, we would verify that they have already obtained the necessary approvals from the health department.
And that's usually through the county?
Yes.
Ms. Avery?
Okay, so, um, local authorities that do not adopt a compliant program to regulate sidewalk vendors, they default to the California Government Code, which is basically you just can't ban sidewalk vendors. Uh, but having the, having a program allows you to place certain regulations like time and things that affect public health or, uh, the public welfare. But adopting this, uh, ordinance is consistent with the city's strategic goals of good governance and economic development. And there's no obvious impacts on the city budget for, well, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, or fiscal year nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
And that's all.
Thank you very much. Any council comments at this time? We've made a lot of them so far, but any additional comments?
I do have a question slash comment. Thank you. So, uh, this is related to section four dash twelve dash six where we have all the parameters for how many feet they have to be away from crosswalks, fire hydrants, driveway prints, et cetera. Uh, my first question is, um, are these numbers part of SB nine forty-six or the California Government Code? Or was this something we determined ourselves to be an accurate representation of what the legislation intended?
This is the, this is the extra step that cities are allowed to take in, um, putting forth regulations that are, that we deem reasonably necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. These numbers are based on what has been deemed best practices, based on what, what other cities have done in their ordinances and, and what the city attorney's office believes is, is reasonable while still falling within the intent of the state law.
Okay. So, so thank, thank you. My, my concern with some of these numbers is, um, cause I, I know we talked about we're able to regulate this type of business, especially if it affects public safety, pedestrian traffic safety. So thinking again of the one example that I've seen in our city is if we had a food truck parked in front of Ralph's and it's positioned in a way that obstructs the line of sight of someone exiting the Ralph's parking lot into Las Tunas, would that be considered obstructing or impacting the vehicular safety of people entering in and out of a, a space? And whether this handcuffs us to, I guess, potentially introduce a traffic hazard or allowing a traffic hazard to be present on a busy intersection? So I, I don't know how, how would we even approach or address that in the context of the regulation?
So, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I was just, I'm just gonna say one option that we have, um, since they're, they're allowed to park, I mean, within the, within the confines of the ordinance, they're allowed to park basically anywhere that a vehicle could legally park. So I mean, one, one thing that we do now is where we find situations where there may be visibility issues near a driveway or near a corner, we have the traffic engineer look at it and we can either add red curb or extend existing red curb. Um, so if there were situations where generally ten feet, within ten feet of a driveway is okay, but in this one particular location, we're concerned about a safety issue, we could always look at that and extend the red curb to prevent anybody from parking close to the driveway. And the food trucks would have to comply with that, with that same regulation because they could not legally park in a red zone.
Yeah, cause my, my concern is the fact that food trucks are really tall and they're large. So it's kind of difficult to compare those with, say, regular sized vehicles.
Yeah, what you're saying is ten feet sufficient for the food truck, or it would be sufficient probably for a vehicle. It may not be sufficient to have a food truck parked ten feet. And I tend to agree with that, um.
But then again, I, I, I kind of, I understand why numbers have to be in place, but I'm just concerned, like if we had that specific example and, and again, the Ralph's parking lot, just the sheer number of cars going in and out, exiting, entering from Las Tunas, uh, it's, just seems like it's a matter of time before something happens.
So ten feet there in, in that context is his number that we have seen in other places? Which is why it was adopted here because it seems to be a relatively common number?
Well, it hasn't been adopted yet. It's been proposed.
Not, not been adopted here, but has been adopted in other places, so it's why we incorporated it, I apologize. But where, um, were we to find that it's not working, uh, certainly we could change that. We could go so far as to say, you know, ten feet except in the downtown business district or ten feet except on Las Tunas and Rosemead. There will be, as, as the Mayor Protam said, uh, some chance to come back and, and obviously redo some of these as, as needed.
Okay, so I, I guess that, that would be my main comment is I just want to understand what level of flexibility we have to change, and I think Mayor Protam mentioned that. So I, as long as there is that reassurance that we can reevaluate this with time, then, then I think I'm.
And I just want to make one thing clear also. You mentioned the red curving. That ten feet doesn't have to be red curved, correct? For the, in other words, just, uh, the ten feet applies whether it's red curved or not.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And some red curbs, I don't, is there a, is there, there's, is there a certain length of red curving in, that we have in the city? Or is it just by wherever it is or whatever the reason for it is? It's not like it's just ten feet always?
No, there's, there's general standards that the, the, uh, the MUTCD, the Manual on Traffic Control Devices, there are guidelines and standards that it provides. Um, but typically the traffic engineer looks at each situation individually and determines if red curb is necessary and if so, how much is appropriate. So we have it in some locations and not in others. And we've, we go fairly regularly. If someone brings to our attention that there's a visibility concern or something like that, we'll have the traffic engineer look at it and we'll add or extend red curb as needed.
It, it sounds to me like Steph hasn't exactly been reinventing the wheel here. We've done some, some, uh, some research and found that what's maybe working in other cities as far as the lengths and stuff. It remains to be seen whether that works in our city, of course, but we have to start somewhere, I take it, and that's why. Cause I, uh, my, my only thing is, and I don't want to belabor the point, but for example, I know we have two different, um, ordinances, one regarding mobile foods and then one, of course, the carts. But you know, we have, it's kind of seems, for the carts, it's kind of all over the place. We have five feet here, ten feet there, eighteen inches there. I mean, it's just, I'm wondering why it's just not a standard ten feet. But I guess it's relative to the area we're talking about. So, and, and I, I can understand it. But, um, you know, it's, I guess at some point we're just gonna have to figure out what's, what's working and what isn't working. And hopefully, uh, you know, we'll, we'll stay on top of that, so. All right. Uh, any other comments or questions by council? Vince, do you have anything?
Uh, the distances we talked about only applied to sidewalk. That wasn't a mobile food. You know, the mobile food section doesn't have distances.
The mobile carts or the mobile, or the?
Mobile food vendors don't.
Mobile foods or the, the lunch truck says.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that has a ten foot, uh, uh, from, from a driveway print and that's one section.
No, that's a, that's a separate section.
Well, it says twenty-five feet.
Yeah, that's section, uh, four thirteen three.
Section four thirteen three, uh, C, yes.
So twenty-five feet and ten feet from the driveway.
Yeah, actually, B and C both include. There's, there's not as many because, um, the, since the vendors are on the side, the cart vendors are on the sidewalks, so there's more things for them to be separated from. Whereas the trucks are in the streets, so there's not as much specificity needed.
Okay. All right. If we don't have any further comments at this time by council, I'll open up the public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to comment? I think, uh, Steve, I think you had a request.
Mayor Protam Chavez, council members, one thing that wasn't brought up, and I see this, cause I live near Cloverly Schools, and some of the schools have these food vendors come up there. And the way the ordinance is written, I think it would prohibit them from doing, the schools do it. I know Cloverly does it two or three times a year, and I've seen it done at Temple City High School. My question is, what are we gonna do about that to make it so the schools can still do that for the students? Second thing is, I've heard a lot of complaints at Ralph's when I go there to shop about these, the, the truck vendors. And one thing that Councilmember Mann brought up, I've come out of there and you can't see the traffic when they're parked there. They, uh, they park right up to the driveway. Having a red curb there might, might be a good thing. The other thing is, and the ordinance prohibits the flashing signs. And they have, on the trucks I've seen there, they have flashing signs. And, you know.
Well, under the new ordinance, they can't use them.
Yeah, yeah, which I'm glad, cause it, because the way they park, some of the people in the apartments across from Ralph's on Cloverly, they get those, the, the signs right inside their places. You know, but my biggest concern is with the schools, when they have the mobile food trucks from like, um, In-N-Out and Carl's and Wendy's. There needs to be some sort of legislation there that allows them to do that for the kids. My second thing is that the vendors there at Ralph's were parking there, what I'd heard from management, from six in the evening till six in the morning. And, uh, I know.
Don't believe everything you hear, Steve. There's a, I don't think that was happening.
Yeah, and I've seen it myself and I know that they got a ticket one morning for the three, three AM to six, six AM and for street sweeping there, cause of when they were parking.
Well, I believe the intent of these, this, uh, reg, regulations is to get those things a little more under control.
Yeah, yeah, I, I realize that. My biggest question is about the schools, how, how we're gonna bring them into compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I believe, just to real quickly, Mr. City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but obviously this, these, these regulations don't apply to, uh, food vendors on school grounds. That's something that we do not legislate, I believe. Now, if they're on a city street next to a school, then of course that would come in there, our purview.
That's correct. If they have a, have negotiated with the school to pull onto the school grounds into their parking lot and to serve the students, that's outside the scope of this ordinance.
But I believe, don't we, uh, already have, uh, some ordinances in place for special events and things like that to apply for special permits? I believe there was someone in here in the report that, uh, not, not made an exception, but allowed for, uh, for vendors, uh, to be used with special event permission.
Yes, we, we provided a clause in here so that if it's in conjunction with an, an event where the city has issued a special event permit or a street closure permit, that, that could be included under that permit.
And that would include the city, cause I know sometimes during the summer concerts in the past, we've had, uh, the lunch trucks come and park on the street around the park. And so that would be an example of such an event.
Correct.
Nice. Okay. All right. Any other, any other public comments? Jim? Jim, do you mind, uh, did you fill out a, a request more in place?
Oh, sure, yeah. All right, I even have my own pen.
All right.
Anyway, good evening.
Good evening.
The one thing I have to agree with was, uh, Councilmember Vincent Yu's comment that this seems to be like an overreach from the state. There's a lot of stuff that's coming from Sacramento that does this. And one of the things they don't take into consideration, we know that Las Tunas, uh, for a while it was bridal shops, then nail shops. Now it's restaurants. And these restaurants now, we're gonna have these mobile food vendors parked in front of them. I wonder how they're gonna feel about it. And the other thing is, I didn't see anything here. I don't know if it's in our existing regulations, but if there's any limit to how many can be on a street, either by a number or how far away from each other they can be parked. Those are my observations on, on what we have right now. And again, uh, we wouldn't have to be dealing with it if this didn't come down from Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, my observation, I, I feel like I'm back in, uh, constitutional law class in law school. This is a classic First Amendment situation where the state and other, uh, higher bodies have decided that, uh, you know, these, these vendors do have, and rightly or whatever, however you want to think about it, do have a First Amendment right to, to do these things. But also retaining and giving local jurisdictions such as ours the right to place reasonable, and this is also classic constitutional law, reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. And that's really what we're doing here, is we're trying to not only comply with the law, which we're bound to do until that's changed, but also at least they give us the, uh, the, um, right to make those restrictions, and that's what we're doing here. And whether these restrictions actually work, that's something that will be determined. I think it's a good start. And, uh, certainly something that, uh, we will need to keep an eye on to see if it becomes an issue and how we need to tweak these things, which we commonly do. I mean, we change regulations all the time, so. Okay. All right. Anybody else from the public? Uh, if not, I will close, close public comments. And, uh, any last council questions or comments on this matter? Hearing none, um, can we get a motion?
From Mayor Protam Chavez, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance, ordinance number nineteen dash one zero three five for first reading by title only, amending titles four and five of our municipal code relating to sidewalk and mobile food vending with the inclusion of, um, Mr. City Attorney's Amendment to section four dash twelve dash seven B, uh, changing the, um, changing it to allow the city manager or the designee to adopt additional requirements. Uh, also part of the motion to wait for the reading of this ordinance and to schedule the second reading of this ordinance for June eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been seconded. Any objection? Hearing none. Can we get the council roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chavez?
Yes, and, uh, wanna go ahead and read the ordinance title, I believe?
Thank you. Ordinance number nineteen dash one zero three five. An ordinance of City Council of City of Temple City, amending the Temple City Municipal Code to adopt chapters four dash twelve sidewalk vending and chapter four dash thirteen mobile food vending.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Avery. Good job.
Thank you, uh, um, Mr. Mayor Protam. Just want to add one last comment. I just should have said it. I really appreciate, uh, the city attorney and staff working together. I think, uh, you know, it's, uh, Sacramento overreaching. However, we are, I mean, I think they've done a very good job in, in, in law and by, by, by at least controlling the place, time, and manner, like you said, uh, like you explained to us, um, to, to try to control some of the street vending activities. And maybe even help with the present, uh, foot truck situation, that's more so. So I want to thank them for doing a very good job.
Good job. Thank you. Appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes.
Okay, we will now move on to item eleven, update from our city manager.
I haven't said much tonight, sir. It's hard for a city manager to hold his, or hold his or her, uh, comments down. Real quick, uh, Permo's. Um, real quick, Primrose, uh, as was mentioned earlier by the public, uh, we did have a workshop this past Saturday, got a decent attendance, a little bit twenty plus throughout the morning, um, got some good input that we're gonna present back to the standing committee and then to the, um, council eventually, along with the commission. So we look forward to continuing that process. Um, interesting ideas going forward. So, uh, we will keep the, obviously, the council and the community posted as we move forward. Uh, our legislation, SB three, three forty-one, related to the, uh, lighting and assessment districts is moving forward. Um, uh, we'll be hitting the assembly hopefully in the next week or so, and, and, uh, the effectuating date would be January first, two thousand and twenty, so as, um, as we discuss on Thursday during our special study session with the council related to our budget, those numbers will not be included because we do not have the law passed yet, so, um, we'll be dealing with that. But again, as we'll talk to you about some of the challenges that are ahead of us financially, uh, very considerable in terms of the pers rates that are going forward. Um, Ms. Pagras, you're, uh, our administrative services director, will clearly lay out some of those challenges and those future fiscal challenges that are ahead of us, that unfortunately will be taking a lot of any future revenue growth and others is sucking through and, and, uh, taking up all those dollars that we're looking at in the future, unfortunately, so.
Brian, next Thursday, right?
This Thursday.
This Thursday's cog.
Okay, um, okay, we'll have to, we'll have to look at the-
Did you change, they, remember they changed the date and we, you changed the date?
Okay, um-
What time? What time?
Uh, seven o'clock.
Army's at five thirty, I don't know, there's a lot on the agenda.
Okay, um, well, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out afterwards.
We'll talk.
And other than that, nothing else to report?
Thank you. Okay, uh, update from our city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Luckily for us and many other cities, uh, in the state that have, currently have prohibitions on the sale of cannabis within the city, Assembly Bill thirteen fifty-six has been tabled until January of two thousand and twenty. Uh, the bill would have required any jurisdiction in which a majority of the voters had voted in favor of Proposition sixty-four to allow a statutorily defined number of, um, recreational cannabis shops, uh, within the jurisdiction. For Temple City, based on the way the bill was when it, it, um, got put on suspension, we would have had to have allowed two, uh, somewhere in the city. One of the problems with the bill is the initiative, when it was taken to the voters, specifically said that local jurisdictions would retain land use control over cannabis uses, uh, and this bill looked to undo that by saying that the will of the voters was to have, uh, cannabis uses, uh, apparently throughout California, uh, when, as we say, when the initiative itself went through, uh, voters were led to believe that cannabis uses would be legal if people wanted them to be, rather than, uh, being forced on them. So, we're happy to see this shelved. Uh, it was, um, as council member U has said and, and Mayor Protem has said, a, a bit of an overreach by at least one politician, uh, in Sacramento, and we will obviously be watching it closely, uh, next December to see if it, it continues to move on or if it dies for good.
Okay, thank you. You know, the ironic thing of all this, and you mentioned it, yeah, most of our state legislators do come from local jurisdictions, and somehow on that trip from, uh, the local entity to Sacramento, uh, something happens.
Yes.
But, uh, sometimes good and sometimes not so good, but that's the way it is. Okay. All right, we'll now move on to item thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Before we go to any individuals, I have a note regarding the city commissioner recruitment ad hoc to provide staff with the next step. Is that, Peggy, is that something that you need to resolve tonight? So, do you wanna tell us what we're looking at, or what is the situation?
So, about two weeks ago, the commissioner recruitment application deadline, uh, had passed, and we're waiting, um, for the council ad hoc committee to review the, all the applications and, um, provide staff direction as how they would like to proceed, um, continuing forward.
Okay, do we have any deadlines on that, timelines, uh?
Ideally, um, we would like to have candidates or applicants, um, uh, recommended to full council for interview as with past practice, so that we could try to appoint before the end of June, and then to have the new commissioners seated before their first meetings in July, so that-
There was a total of nineteen applicants?
Okay, so the first step would be for, uh, council member Mann and Sternquist to meet, and you guys will be doing that soon. I'm, I'm assuming, and-
Yeah.
And report back, so. All right, I think we're on schedule then, so hopefully we'll get something done by the end of the month.
We'll take care of it.
We'll talk.
You'll talk?
We'll talk.
Okay, so we'll work that out with, uh, with Peggy. Okay, any other, uh, council reports, uh, any other standing or, or committees or ad hoc to report? No? Okay, and we will now move on to item fourteen, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. We'll start with council member U.
Uh, nothing to add, except I'm really glad that the Primrose property is moving forward.
So, okay, thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Uh, thank you. Just wanna share, um, last Friday, Mayor Protem Chavez and I were, uh, part of the, uh, Temple City High School Career Day, so, uh, I think they do it every other year, I believe.
I believe so.
Yeah, every, every two years, so, uh, I, I had the opportunity to speak with some of the high school students, um, on the topic of civil engineering, so that's my regular day job. And, uh, the turnout has always been amazing. I, I don't know if, apparent, it, the kids pick the topics, so they're not forcing them to go to these sessions, and, well, I had two full classrooms, which I, I thought was, oh, I, I was happy about that. I was pleasantly surprised, though.
You went to two classrooms?
Well, they had two sessions.
Two classes, yeah.
Yeah, we were the same classroom, um, and then they had two, two different groups come in, and, and you know, the thing that amazes me all the time about our high school kids is the questions that they ask. They're very engaged, um, they're, I, I can't imagine myself asking some of the questions that, that they ask. One of them even asked me about the salary to pay.
They always do.
Oh, they always do, yeah.
In the past, they always ask me that.
They always ask you, okay, so I, I don't think two years ago, anyone asked me that, so. But, uh, it, it was very enjoyable, and I'm, I'm glad the, the school district knows that, um, and, and very, very happy to be, be a part of that. That's, that's all I have to share.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, just one thing that, in reading the, um, report on code enforcement from Director Forbes, it was interesting to see that we have quite a few, um, I guess you would say converted garages or storage rooms being used for, um, housing, and they're on that, um, list. And, um, were we, I, I forget right now, but we are gonna relook at something in our ordinance, right? To be more specific regarding, um, no, I'm getting, I'm getting that confused with, um, something else. But it also seems like we had a slowdown with ADUs, but an increase in violations for converted, illegal conversions. Does, is, does it just seem like all of a sudden we're just having an uptake in, um, are they from neighbors complaining, or is it code enforcement going out, looking, not looking specifically for that, but they go out to see something, and then maybe they see a neighbor that has something looking like a converted garage, or?
If I was to characterize it as a com, it's a combination of all those.
Okay.
Some of it's reported, some of it's the, uh, the officer going out on another complaint, seeing some other issues related to that, so that's, I would say it's a combination of the, of the, of all of those.
And then it seemed like the dates pretty much fluctuate, so it's hard to tell, like, when it first became a case, and some of them will say pending, and others will say they have an actual compliance date. But there were a few that had a long time. One of them was like six months, and I wasn't sure, how do they go about deciding who gets, you know, three months, who gets six months?
There are some discretionary aspects. We, we, we are gearing towards compliance rather than throwing down the hammer. Uh, I can speak, I, I don't wanna speak specifically to some cases because there's adjudicat, there's an adjudicatory element to them, uh, that go to the city prosecutor at times, but I can think of one case where there was this senior, uh, lady who owned a property who had some property maintenance issues, and it was gonna take her some time to, in order, because of the cost, to get there. We informed the neighbor, we informed everybody else, and it took her about six months or so to get to the property maintenance standards, uh, but she eventually got there.
Okay, so there's not a set time, it's just discretionary based on the situation?
It depends also too, if there is, uh, there are life safety issues, those are different, those are treated very differently than, um, those are treated differently than, you know, certain other issues as well. There's some discretionary elements to that. On the staff part, there are, when we're get to life safety issues or building safety issues related to that, there is obviously less discussion, less discretion because there is the potential for liability.
And the thing I was getting it confused with is on the, um, what do you call it, the temporary housing?
Mm-hmm.
It seems that there's more and more advertisements out for people to rent out your, um, homes-
Airbnbs.
For Airbnbs, and now that there's even another, it's not called Airbnb, but it's similar, and I saw it on a Facebook page over and over again, saying how you can make so much money by doing a short-term rental, and so I just think people need to be aware that we do have something in place that prohibits that.
We do, and we, and we will be coming back with, on, with the zoning ordinance update as well. Um, Mr. Remers and Mr. Forbes and staff will be coming back with you, uh, more, even more refining, even more so what we have today.
Right, and that's the one I was referring to, I was getting the two mixed up. But I really do appreciate having that report. Um, it just really gives me a good idea of, you know, what is actually going on, especially when, you know, you drive by a certain home that has, you know, weeds and overgrowth, and you're not sure what's going on. I can refer to that list, and sure enough, those homes are on that list, and then I don't feel like I need to call, or what's happening? Is there, you know, staff's maybe not on top of it? They really are, and, and the thing that was disappointing is that that list has been getting longer of non-compliance, so, I don't know, maybe people just need to take heed and, and know that they have a responsibility, and this is a partnership here. You know, we don't just give citations, we wanna work with people, but they have a responsibility to be, you know, good stewards in, in the city also, so. Anyway, that's it.
You know, um, one question I forgot to ask when we were talking about the, uh, dog, I mean, the Humane Society. Who, who picks up our, um, animals on the street and-
Humane Society?
Humane Society, yeah.
Yeah, but I did-
And do we, does, do residents call the city, or do they call Humane Society, or either?
They, they call both, they, but they're, they're, I think with the way that we've changed the operation to where all of that burden is pretty much on the Humane Society, most of it comes to the Humane Society. I'm sure, I haven't asked recently, to be honest, but I don't, I don't think we get as many calls into city halls we may have a few years ago, but we, I'm sure we still do.
But if they do, then, then they'll go out and- They'll go out and pick it up.
Except I think on Sundays, they don't.
No, on Sundays they would know, not Sunday-
But there is a number when you call.
Like a hotline?
Yes, if you have a deceased animal or something, you can call and they'll tell you what to do, 'cause I had to do that, but.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Okay, just a couple of quick things, um, uh, I, I did stop by the Primrose, uh, event a little bit on Saturday. I thought it was, uh, from what I could tell, well-run, uh, well-attended. Uh, the, uh, consultants were doing a great job explaining situation. I, I didn't stay, I, I think they had some of them, actually, people who attended were able to fill, fill out a map or kind of draw on a map what they wanted and where, and so it was a very engaging, uh, type of hands-on experience, and, um, so I wanna thank staff for doing that. I think, uh, they had tents set up, they had, uh, water and coffee and dessert for people, so it was, it was a good event. And, uh, I think we're gonna have a cou, at least a couple more of those, I think, before-
Uh, not in the same manner, but just some follow-ups to that, and then go to the standing committee and then the council, and then park.
And am I, I'm still banned from those, right?
Oh, yes, 'cause you live close.
I, I've, I didn't get a, a chance to get an, an answer, but, so I should just stay away?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, it goes. Okay, and, uh, as, uh, council member Mann, uh, mentioned, uh, thank you Temple City High School for having a career there, inviting us to attend, uh, it's interesting, you know, I've never been asked, in all the times I've gone, to talk about my career as an attorney, which is what I've done for thirty-five years, but, uh, so this time they asked me to speak about being a college professor and also an elected official, which was interesting, but, uh, you're right, the kids are engaging and they do come, and, uh, it's good that they do have an interest. I was glad to see, uh, some of them did have an interest in local politics and obviously pushed our youth committee, and, uh, a lot of them weren't aware of it, so it's still something that, you know, they need to be aware of, so. So that was a good, good event, and, uh, thank them for doing that. And, um, just one last thing on the youth committee, I wanna thank, uh, everyone for their help this year. We, we ended up, uh, last week with our final meeting, and a lot of our new applicants attended. Uh, Peggy, I think, what do we have, twenty-nine applicants?
Wow.
So, twenty-nine applicants, and we'll start going through those, uh-
How many positions?
How many spaces?
Uh, I think six or seven, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Spot, so it is very difficult to get on the youth committee, uh, um, but, uh, you know, we, I, we had a good group of, of students there. I think you had a chance to talk with a lot of them, and-
Yeah, yeah.
And thank you for doing that, uh-
Yeah, if, if I may say, that's, it's amazing, 'cause I, I was there last year as well, and it's always so well-attended. There's a large number of kids who, I guess the word spreads within their circles, and they start getting, uh, and, and they're very, in, in fact, speaking of engaged kids, I think, uh, that, the questions that they were asking were, were also amazing. It's just incredible what they're, what they're capable of, and if only we could have all of them.
Uh, uh, you know, and I, I think we are kind of creating a, uh, an interest in, in the city amongst our youth, which is not common in many cities, and, uh, I, I think it's a benefit, and, uh, and certainly, uh, everyone who's participated, Peggy, of course, who is, uh, I wanna say the godfather of our youth committee.
Godmother.
Godmother of our youth committee, and does a, a great job. They all look up to her and, and Gillian so much that, uh, you know, and, uh, and what I think speaks to a lot of it is we get a lot of our, our alumni come back and, and, uh, still have an interest in the city, and I truly believe at some point, and I hope I, I hope I'm around to see this, that one of those youth committee members is gonna be sitting up here on, on Tuesday nights one day, and that'll be the, the complete process once that happens, so.
You know, some, some cities actually have a youth representative who doesn't vote, but sits up at the council meeting.
Oh, really? That'd be interesting.
The, um, school district does. Our school district does do that, too.
Our school district does, yes, yeah.
But I have seen it in other cities, too.
Maybe we'll think about that for next year.
So that might be something, maybe the chair, uh, do they have a, a chairperson?
Yeah, yeah, they do.
Anyway.
Good deal.
And it was nice to know that we started off slow, but we landed up with nineteen commission applications, so that also is a huge plus.
And, uh, one of these days, we're gonna get that, that, what do we call it? I kept forgetting what we call it.
Citizen Academy.
Citizen Academy. It's been so long, I forgot what we called it, but, uh, we'll get that going again one of these days, and I think that'll, uh, uh, get some more members, but yeah, we did get a great group this time, so. Okay, um, any additional public comments? Anybody like to make any additional public comments? Okay, so I will close additional public comments, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.